Okay, I believe we are good to go on the technology and it is now officially six o'clock. So we will bring the Norton School Committee meeting to order. First agenda item, sorry, first item of business is the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, welcome everybody at home to join us today. First up, we have the vote to approve the minutes of April fifteenth, the open meeting, sorry, open meeting minutes of April fifteenth and the February fourth and April fifteenth executive session meetings. Has everybody had time to look those over?
Yes.
Are there any issues?
No.
Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve those three minutes as written.
Second.
Okay, and we do need to roll call still, Joe?
Um, no, because you're actually all seen and heard, so.
Excellent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Or not? Okay. Before we go any further, I do want to take a quick second just to to recognize, I believe this was Teacher Appreciation Week.
That is correct.
And I did want to say thank you to all the teachers who are out there watching and the teachers who are not watching. It could not possibly be done without you, so thank you for everything you do. It is is much appreciated. We may not always say it, we try to, we try to say it as often as we can, but but it is appreciated. So thank you very much. Okay, um, next up is the warrants.
I've reviewed and approved the following warrants, school expense warrant, April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, six hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, six seventy-six, six twenty and seventeen cents. School payroll warrant, April eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, nine hundred and ninety-three thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-two cents. I wish to enter into public record.
Yeah, do we vote on those, Joe?
You do not.
Nope.
Okay, entered without objection. Next up is our student representatives. I cannot see if they're on.
I know.
To be honest with you, so.
They're on, and they can hear you fine.
We're on.
We're having an issue with that.
Okay.
We just don't hear them.
Yeah, so we we can't see you guys, just so you know, we'll be able to hear you, but we can't see you. I assume Malia and Zoe are both there?
Yeah, we're here.
Okay, I will turn it over to you guys then for an update.
So we asked the principals to give us actual feedback from the students on what they want to make better this time rather than just what they like. So for the JCS, we had not having to wear a mask, having stalker nets, having two classes on the playground, being able to eat lunch with your friends from different classes, having art as a special again because JCS has no art this year, more mask breaks, more math each day. They said there should be three lunch choices, writing should be in the afternoon, there should be extra lunchtime and extra playtime and extra recess in gym. And Zoe's gonna do the LGN.
Well, a lot with the LGN is a little bit similar. They didn't want to wear masks anymore, but kind of you need to. I found it really interesting that they said they can't use the library. I don't know, we use the library up in the high school. They have a Norton library open, so I found that kind of interesting and with the whole less strict about wiping stuff down or all that, I don't know, I thought that it could be possible, maybe this year, maybe probably not till next year, but that was just something that they they want to go back to the library. They want to have recess with more kids and they don't want to have assigned seats in the cafeteria. So that was a possibility that they're talking about, but I'm not sure with the whole contact tracing. Malia has the yell.
So most kids thought that everything was going well, most of them are just happy to be back and see their friends and be able to work with their teachers in person and not have to be online. A few kids would love to be able to play at recess or like across classrooms similar to the JCS, like they want to be able to play with other classes, which is something we are working on to enable them to be able to do soon. Some kids said they would like to be home on Monday, which is funny because as they were saying that, another student said, wait, we just said we don't want to work from home, to which the student said, oh yeah, then I guess I just want three-day weekends.
Join the club.
Yeah, literally join the list. A few kids mentioned masks, but again, a few others said that they are very used to them. Zoe's gonna do the middle school.
Um, for the middle school, I don't really have like specific quotes because they're almost all the same. They all want to have lunch outside. They, I think they did it a couple of times with just a few, like a couple of classes, but they all want to have lunch outside because they think they get spread out more, they can see other people. We do it at the high school, everyone really likes it. But yeah, they want to have lunch outside. They also want to have mask breaks more often outside. They said some of the teachers don't even let them have mask breaks, so that's kind of disappointing. But a lot of kids said that they think it's going well and they didn't have too much to say about what could be changed, but a big overwhelming was mask breaks and outside lunches. I'll go right into the high school, but on the high school, when we had a survey of, it was included of what we showed you guys before, but it's more like specific now of what kids actually said about what they want to change. They said that outside lunch has been going really well and they want to keep that going. Some kids even said, keep up the good work because it's working really well. So that was kind of good to see. But then also kids want people to wear a mask properly because there are still teachers who yell at kids, you need to pull your mask up above your nose, so I think that's throughout all of the schools, but it's pretty big in the high school. Malia has a couple more things for the high school.
So a lot of people like that seniors get privileged, like late arrival and they get something like that because after this crazy year where they haven't really got a lot of things, they get, you know, a little something to look forward to, even if it's something like every day, you know. I agree with Zoe with the mask wearing thing at the high school and the the whole one-way hallways deal, which I know we probably see every day that half the kids don't follow that and sometimes it's caught by teachers, sometimes obviously they miss it because there's so many kids. I think the main thing for the high school is that we are doing well right now. We love the outside lunch, we love all the, you know, it feels safe, we love to see our friends again. And I think with my experience at the high school, it's been really good. COVID restriction wise and safety wise, I've felt fine. I don't know, Zoe, if you feel differently, I feel like it's been overall, besides the kids who refuse to wear the mask over the nose and such, like I think it's not that bad, you know, even though that's the worst.
Yeah, no, definitely the same, like I definitely feel like the high school's doing it pretty well where everyone's spaced out. But I mean, on the survey, we had some kids, they don't want to be spaced out anymore. They told us, no more restrictions on that, loosen up, and so that was wow.
That's a specific comment on there, there's only two months, loosen the restrictions, which it is a pandemic.
Yep. But overall, I think we had a pretty positive output with all of it. But I think that pretty much sums it up unless you have something else, Malia?
Yeah, I think that's pretty much what we have, a lot of it's positive, a lot of it's pretty simple things like going outside and mostly a lot of kids are just excited to be back to something pretty normal. So yeah, I think that's just about what me and Zoe have.
Uh, thank you, good stuff as always. It seems like the complaints, I don't know, the comments are starting to kind of dwindle down to really focusing around lunch and masks, right? And that's people who have outside lunch, a lot of people that don't have outside lunch.
I actually was gonna ask Zoe and Malia if they could email me, this is Dr. Byatt, if you could email me all of those suggestions, because I'll take it up with the administration. I'm hearing, I heard this week alone that at the high school, the number of students getting their shots has significantly increased in the last few days. So I think that's also part of the feeling of let's loosen up some of the restrictions, is that I've gotten my shot type of thing. And I think we'll see more of that, but I'm definitely willing to, we've gone from complaints to complaints to to ideas with some complaints and I really like the idea part. So I'm willing to accept, not accept, but look at those ideas that some of the students at the elementary school, middle school and and secondary are suggesting and I'll sit down with people above me to see if we can do some of those things.
Um, yeah, Malia and I, every week or every time we do this, we make a doc on it, so we can just share it with you.
Yeah, well, I can share that with you, I can send that to everyone in the school committee if they want to access it.
Thank you.
Sure. Great, thanks guys.
I just want to say real quick though, Des, I really appreciate girls, the way that you're kind of taking this on and and reporting to us in a little bit of a different manner. I think it's definitely helpful for us to hear a lot of what kids are saying in all the different schools. So I appreciate all the hard work you guys are putting into this, thank you.
No problem, honestly though, it's honestly not even us doing it, we're just like the voices for it, but it's all the principals doing all the work, they're telling us.
More like the face of it, like they kind of do the behind the scenes, like we reach out to them like, hey, what do you want to say? Kind of deal.
Yeah, so we're always like.
Take credit when you can, girl. Okay, take back everything that I said about you. Thanks for nothing.
Thank you.
All right, that's again, good stuff. Okay, so next up, we have the class of two thousand and twenty-one update from Principal Dolman. I do not see him, is he on?
Oops, sorry about that, I turned off my my camera there, just to attend to something going on in the house, but yes, thank you very much. So we have a few things to cover tonight and very excited, we actually have our salutatorian here as well as our valedictorian, which we're gonna take a little bit of time to recognize. So first up is our salutatorian, that is Madison, or sorry, Madeline, Maddie Dolak, who is taking a very rigorous course load or has almost finished a rigorous course load here at Norton High School. She's challenged herself with a lot of honors and AP courses over the course of her career, has over a four-point-six GPA. She's won numerous of academic awards, including academic excellence awards in English, science, math, art, technology, including woodworking, academic excellence in English and French, as well as science and in her junior year. She's demonstrated great leadership qualities as a member of our Norton High School track and field team and as a co-catechist at Saint Mary's Church. She's also a member and mentor in the Girl Scouts. She's taken lots of community service projects on and has also experienced, has experienced his teaching and mentoring some of the youth of the Norton community. She also as a catechist at Saint Mary's and her opportunities leader led to a younger Brownie troop as a lead to a younger Brownery troop. So really happy to see her getting this recognition and she is going to be off to Boston College, I believe, in the fall to study chemistry. So we really appreciate her great career at Norton High School.
Just so that she knows, we do have a her certificate here and I'll make sure that you get it. That recognizes you as the salutatorian for Norton High School's class of two thousand and twenty-one and also the communications office will be in contact with you so that we can do some pictures and get a press release out all about you, number one. And it's so funny, this is kind of interesting for me because I remember when I met her, right, because you know, in terms of school and I know her mom, because her mom was at the mom's who way back in the day when I started here and now actually subs for us. So it's just incredible to see a grown-up senior and going off to BC and study chemi, I can't even spell chemistry. Take it, so congratulations to you and job well done.
Great, thank you, and so up next is our tremendous valedictorian, Kevin Mahoney. And I'm just gonna read from some of his terrific write-up from his guidance counselor that he puts forth tremendous effort in his academics and makes schoolwork a priority. He's demonstrated through his GPA and consistent high honor roll status. He's a proud member of six academic societies. Last spring, he was awarded the Rensselaer Medal for his high achievement in math and science. He also won the Voice of Democracy essay contest at the district level in addition to numerous awards of excellence for academics over the course of his his career. He continues to challenge himself, he's gonna be wrapping up several AP courses, five of them this year, I believe. He's an absolute pleasure to have in the classroom, his teachers report and is a valuable asset to schools' athletic teams as well. He is a varsity athlete in the school's track, wrestling and cross-country teams. He's a leader in the school's band and jazz club and a participant in Best Buddies and Global Citizens. Even though he has a wide range of activities, his skills still shines through. He has shown incredible leadership by participating in the Wheaton College Leadership Conference the past two years, not this year, but the two previous years, and also Special Olympics and tutoring his fellow wrestlers when they needed help. So Kevin is off to Dartmouth in the fall and we wish him the best of luck after his tremendous career at Norton High School.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank Kevin, I, for you, I also have your certificate that will get out to you so that you can have. I think it's, you know, Ms. Mahoney, her, his mom, and congratulations to the parents, but Ms. Mahoney is also a member of our staff at Norton High School and made that commitment as the Mahoneys live in another town and Kevin is a school choice student, as we know, we don't treat anybody differently here, but I think it speaks volumes and we really appreciate that they chose, were a family that decided to choose Norton Public Schools as their school for their student. And I very much appreciate what he does for the band, only because I have a daughter that's in band and so she, I know she looks up to all of those older students that that are part of that. So congratulations to you as well and thank you for choosing Norton High School, we really appreciate it, congrats.
Well, the school committee just want to really quickly say to you both, congratulations on two fine academic careers here. You both headed to awesome schools, BC and Dartmouth are phenomenal. I have friends who went to both actually and they're all extremely successful. So so good luck to you and we appreciate you guys giving us your business.
Congrats, guys.
Do we want to open?
In the, in the.
In the comments, we're happy.
I'd love to open it up to to the students if they wanted to make a quick comment, if they don't, that's okay too, I don't want to put you on the spot. If you do, just raise your hand or unmute. I'll take those and go.
I was just gonna thank the, um, thank the town for giving me this opportunity. I'm really happy that I opted to do school choice four years ago and I think it's been a great place to be and I just, I love the support from the town, I appreciate it.
Glad to have you.
It's great to hear.
And it's just gonna give us a big smile, no, she's gonna talk to the folks.
Thanks, I'd just like to thank all of my teachers for helping me all four years.
Great comments.
Great job, guys.
Okay. Maybe I'll send you comments, no? Okay, we're gonna move on then to the vote to approve the FY.
Sure, sorry, yeah, yeah, so those are our individual recognitions and I was just gonna kind of do a little bit of a rundown of some of the things at school that we're doing to recognize the class in general and some of the celebrations that we're having and then talk just a little bit about graduation as well this year. So first off, you know, this has been a huge joint effort. We've had great help from our parent advisory board representatives who really got the ball rolling to make sure that we recognize the class of two thousand and twenty-one and all the splendor that it deserved, especially since, you know, it's it's kind of, you're, it's a terrible debate to have, we were talking about sort of the two classes, two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one and how sort of opposite they are where one sort of had to go through the pandemic at the very worst time where this class has not had any opportunity to be celebrated throughout the entire year, but now as we get closer to the spring and conditions are improving, they're they're getting to have some of those celebrations and some of those traditional experiences. So it's just an interesting juxtaposition, but we're very glad through the parent advisory board and the generosity of many people in town that we're able to recognize them in a lot of different ways. So just to kind of go through a few things that have already happened and then will continue to happen, we've been having some special lunches with the collaboration of Chartwells at our high school. They've been preparing some sort of entrees, or at least it happened one time and I think there are more coming in the future, special entrees for our seniors who had sort of the exclusive rights to those upgraded meals at school. We've had a couple of different types of senior signs, our parent advisory board reps did a tremendous job of of making some signs to welcome, this is back in February, sort of congratulating the seniors on their trip and making sure that they were seen and and celebrated. There are a bunch of different signs that were handmade with with tremendous messages of congratulations as well as sort of aspirational statements going forward here as well. We're also planning on having some senior yard signs in recognition of the class of two thousand and twenty-one that will be going out sometime in the relatively near future to be placed in their yards. This, just this last Friday, we actually had our ice cream social. We were able to get some pre-scooped ice cream from Bliss and Attleboro that was delivered and with the help of the senior class advisors, we were able to put some sundae toppings on that and our seniors were able to be outside. It also worked out well, they got to leave a little early because it was day of paving and so we were able, when they finished their ice cream, they were able to scoot out the door and actually save us some of our congestion and get our buses out of there on time. So it was a nice, nice little added benefit for them having that on Friday. Just on Saturday, we also had our craft fair where we had over, I think, forty-eight vendors from all over sort of southeastern Massachusetts come to Norton High School's parking lot in order to sell their wares and it made tremendous money to benefit the senior class there as well. And coming up on this Saturday at around five AM, right around, right before sunset or sunrise, excuse me, we're gonna be having a breakfast outside at at the high school where some vendors are gonna be bringing some coffees or other drinks in the morning as well as some breakfast food that's individually wrapped so that you can enjoy it socially distant, out on the lawn and watch the sunrise come up together there with our class of two thousand and twenty-one. On Thursday, we have a big day planned. It's gonna start actually with our Norton High School band is having a little bit of an outdoor performance and then it's gonna turn into our, what's called the amazing race. This is actually something that Mary Taylor, who's one of the senior class advisors, and this is her last hurrah as a senior class advisor and she's running a kind of like a scavenger hunt that she would typically do at the all-night graduation party. In this case though, many seniors have signed up with teams to compete, kind of running around the grounds, doing, competing certain or completing certain challenges. And then after that is an outdoor movie where students are gonna be able to enjoy sort of pre-wrapped snacks and bottled water and sodas and things like that out on the football field or wherever we can get the screen set up, but outside somewhere there as far as being able to watch the the movie projected. The movie they chose, I believe, is Ferris Bueller's Day Off, if I'm not mistaken, which is exciting to see that, that's a, that's gonna be the chosen one. We've also had various senior treats throughout the end of the spring here. Our parent advisory board has put together small bags, the, one of the ones that was most recently was, what was it? It was commencement, so it was a York Peppermint Patty with a decorated with a cap and gown and purple ribbon. So those have been going out to our seniors as well. Coming up, we have our sort of, we really only have a little bit over two weeks left of of actual classes where we're then gonna be finishing up everything over the course of the last week of the May twenty-fourth. And during that time, heading, or right before that, on the twenty-first, we're gonna be having our senior barbecue and that's gonna be followed by our class picture and we'll be able to socially distance ourselves on the bleachers in order to take one, which is gonna be great. After that, we're gonna have some car decorating. I don't know if we're gonna keep the car decorating because we have had to change our plans a little bit. The twenty-second, that's Saturday, we had a conflict with Wheaton's commencement as far as our car parade and so we did a little bit of poll with our senior class and this was also a nice opportunity because of loosening restrictions and also the willingness of the Norton Public Schools principals to support it. We kind of brought back onto the table what had been the tradition, which was our graduation walk, we're going to all the elementary schools and also the middle school. And because of the conflict, we were, and because of the loosening restrictions, we were able to bring that back on the table. And actually, by about seventy-six percent, the respondents to our senior survey chose to try to do the graduation walk. So that's what we're gonna be doing the week of graduation, rather than the car parade, is we're gonna be using our buses, which we can now sort of socially distance ourselves inside them to avoid any close contacts. That would definitely be kind of our worst nightmare if we had a a close contact right before graduation. We don't want anything like that, so because of the the restrictions and wearing masks, we're gonna be able to spread ourselves out, travel to the elementary schools, sort of see all of the elementary school students as well as former teachers and it's a great tradition that we're gonna be able to get back to this year. Also during that week, we're gonna be working on some sort of transition things. One thing that we're gonna be working on is with an organization called One Love, which focuses on healthy relationships. It's gonna be putting on a little bit of a workshop on Monday with something called Behind the Post. It's a a sort of short little video that really gets to the heart of what mean, or what it means to be a healthy and be in a healthy relationship as our seniors leave and go off to college or career. And then we have graduation rehearsal, followed by our our graduation walk on the second and then graduation at five-thirty on the fourth. We're also doing a little bit, something different this year, last year we did a virtual class night. This year, we really wanted to recognize those seniors in person, but as I mentioned, sort of having those two celebrations made us a little bit nervous, so we're actually going to be combining them. We're gonna start graduation just a little bit earlier at five-thirty and doing some in-person recognition for senior awards as well as our graduation ceremony as well. So we're gonna try to condense those two things to make sure we get those things in person. And then luckily, this year, because they were unable to get it after graduation, on the Tuesday, the eighth, we're gonna be doing prom at Lake Pearl in Rentham, Massachusetts. So our, we were hoping that the guidance would relax a little bit so we could have our whole class. We were worried that we might actually have to have two different proms on the same night, but we're gonna be able to have a single prom at Lake Pearl that night to do pictures and to do our, you know, meal and and give them something that is a traditional experience that unfortunately this class was denied last year and we were very fearful they were gonna be denied it again this year, but we're able to offer them that prom after graduation on the eighth. So those are some of the ways that we're we're celebrating, it's it's for the class of two thousand and twenty-one only, so it'll be something that is gonna be an interesting and kind of unique celebration as well as similar to a traditional prom. So all of those things, I think, are going to be, you know, really fantastic opportunities to recognize our seniors. We're looking forward to graduation, which is, we're gonna be on our football field, similar to the celebration that we did last year. And we're gonna have some more sort of specific information about that shortly, but it's going to be very similar. We do have some relaxed guidance as far as where our students can sit so we can fit everybody at three feet while they're masked outdoors. The state is still limiting us to six guests per student. And so just this evening, actually, I sent out, or actually, it's going out here very shortly, at six-thirty, just some initial information about graduation as well as a link there for guests to register because all guests, part of the state guidance is everyone has to register beforehand, a testing that they won't attend if they have symptoms or are a close contact or anything like that. But we need to have a list of of guests and we'll be welcoming them to our football field where we'll sit socially distanced again, similar to last year, spread out on the football field within an individual grid for each family. So we're really looking forward to it, it's gonna be a very sort of whirlwind next few weeks as our seniors get ready to graduate, less than a month, but we're really excited about it and we're glad that we can give the seniors this year every bit of recognition that they deserve.
Sounds like a great slate of events, thank you to everybody who helped put that together. Too bad about the year of the car parade, everybody enjoyed that last year, to be honest with you. But the phenomenal effort to get this all together, really glad they're gonna get a prom. That's that's very cool, even if it's gonna be somewhat restricted to to only us and graduation as well. Without a hitch last year, that was fantastic, what else?
Just if I may, Mr. Chairman, it's important for everyone to know too that it is outside and it's not undercover at five-thirty on that Friday. Rain date would be the fifth, the second rain date would be the sixth, with a time to be determined, but probably something late morning on both of those and we'll make sure that we publish that as well. So five-thirty on the Friday, probably, again, depending on the weather, if it if it is raining early in the morning but it dries out for the afternoon, then we can make that decision on Friday night, we'll do that, we'll put something out in writing above that as well.
So I just want to say real quick, nothing makes me happier than seeing all of these activities for these seniors. I mean, this class deserves just something to celebrate them and this is so many activities that I didn't think were gonna be able to happen and to see them all happening is just awesome for these kids. So just thank you to Ethan, Amy, Aaron, the the advisors, the parent board and the other parents who have stepped up to really make this happen for our kids, it's appreciated.
Yeah, I think it shows the creativity and resiliency that the parents, staff, students, that they that they've gone through and this is a great way to end it in the most ungrateful time. So I look forward just to graduation again.
Yeah.
I just, I just, we do get a question from Peter Wiggins, who's not only the honorary mayor, but he's also does, works for the press. And yes, Peter, we will make sure that we have a press box area for you on graduation. You will not be denied access, Peter, make sure that you're there under the press along with all the other press.
Okay, there's no other comments, we're gonna move on. Next up is the vote to approve the FY two thousand and twenty-two budget reductions to meet the two-point-five percent increase that we believe we're gonna be getting on Saturday. And Matt, you there?
Yes, I am. So as you remember, we had a five-point-five-five percent budget that was approved by the school committee. To reach the two-point-five percent target means an increase of seven-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. So we had to cut nine-hundred-and-forty-six thousand out of the budget. We started with moving expenses back into revolving accounts that we were used, we were using the budget to support. We didn't think that those would recover, the revolving accounts, we're gotten some information over the past couple of weeks and we're feeling a little bit better about those revolving accounts recovering, so we feel okay with moving that money back in there. We did reduce some programs that were being supported by school choice and then moved some additional expenses into the school choice with that money that was freed up. We have cut out a custodial position, this was a position that had been added in FY two thousand and twenty-one. There's nobody in that position right now, the person that was there moved into another position, a more permanent position that was vacated by a retirement, so we don't have anyone placed in that, we are keeping that for potential additional cleaning, so we're gonna cut that out. We're reducing our substitute accounts, we had added money back into those accounts for FY twenty-two and now we're just gonna reduce some of that add addition we put in there. And then we upped our expected reimbursement to sixty-seven percent for sped circuit breaker, we were budgeting sixty percent. Historically, we've seen right around seventy, so we we feel okay doing that and then we're just gonna apply an additional ninety-eight, ninety-nine thousand dollars of those funds to support the budget. The final cut we put in here was transportation is for four-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand dollars. This we would go back to in the Fall Town Meeting to request this money. This we would go back to in the Fall Town Meeting to request this money to be added into our budget as a supplemental. But we can get through to October easily without this money because we are billed monthly by our special, our transportation. And that starts in September. So we can certainly make it without this, this four hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars till then. So those cuts all add up to the nine hundred and forty six thousand, which gets us to the two point five percent.
So Matt, just to, just to be clear, so for next school year, athletic fees and bus fees will be reduced?
One hundred dollars each. Yeah. So we, we retain the reduction on those fees and. And we kept the, the additional cost in the budget.
So, but so they're reduced by a hundred dollars each of them, correct?
That is correct.
That's great. Thank you.
Matt, our second item here, I believe you said that we cut some expenses that were slated to be paid for by choice.
Yes.
And then you made a second comment that said we were gonna take that savings and use it for other expenses?
Yeah. So what we did was we reduced, we had about sixty thousand dollars worth of expenses that were in choice. So we reduced those programs a little to free up that sixty thousand dollars of choice funds. And they're gonna move expenses out of the appropriation budget and support them with choice funds.
Okay, am I, am I not thinking about this the right way? How are we saving the sixty thousand then?
So we, we're not gonna do some of the items that we were planning to doing that were in, that were being supported by the school choice funds. So by not doing those, it actually freed up sixty thousand dollars worth of choice funds. And then we're moving expenses out of appropriations, which will now be supported by those freed up choice funds.
So removing expenses that were already in the budget out of appropriations into choice. Then, then there's sixty thousand in appropriations somewhere, right?
It's, it's in choice now. So what it does is it, it allows you to reduce your budget by that sixty thousand dollars because it's now being supported by a different fund.
Yeah, no, I, I know what, what I'm saying is, so, so there's a free sixty thousand somewhere. So we're taking the school choice money. And using it to pay for something that we have in the budget of appropriations normally.
Correct.
Correct.
All right. Okay, we, we'll, we'll talk offline about it.
Just think of it this way, there's an operational sixty thousand dollars that's now being covered by school choice.
Right. So let's, let's say we had two, two buckets of expenses. We had sixty thousand and sixty thousand. We're paying for the sixty thousand in school choice. We're paying for the sixty thousand in appropriations. We're eliminating the sixty thousand and now sixty thousand in school choice. We're moving this expense over and paying for the school choice. We have sixty thousand in appropriations now. That's not paying for anything. Where is that going?
That's part of the reduction.
It's getting reduced. It's getting reduced.
Okay, okay, we're here.
So we're losing sixty thousand of X in the expense.
I understand. Okay. All right. Gotcha.
Okay, so, so, so what happens is that the.
All right. So we're not getting sixty thousand back in school choice. We're.
Correct. So what's happening is sixty thousand worth of X in expenses is, is gone, but we're, we're not gonna.
I got you.
We're not gonna buy it.
Well, it's not what we're asking for. Okay, got you. All right.
And that does mean the, um, a vote because you're reestablishing your budget.
And, and the, and the four fifty seven had changed from the Fall Town Meeting. We feel very confident about that.
Yeah, and that number could fluctuate, you know, to be better than four fifty seven. It's all gonna depend on a lot of expenses and line items throughout the summer. And as I committed to you folks, I don't see us spending money throughout the summer that we're saving with positions and all, any of that. It'll be to, to try to keep this number afloat. Have we had any positions announcing retirement or anything like that? Yeah, you'll get that at your next meeting, but yes, we, we've had a couple of surprises, but they all must be filled. And in some cases, they're not gonna, you're not gonna save your, your thirty, forty thousand dollars you're, you're gonna pay to replace.
Is there any information about the start, you know, going back in September about transportation and distancing? Is there? So is there any way to sort of reduce the costs if we have all of the kids closer together on school buses?
No, because we're.
To kind of limit the buses or are we staying where we're at?
Yeah, we'd be staying where we're at. I think the biggest issue that's going to happen is if, if there's an uptick, you know, late summer into the fall. And if we have to go back to, you know, hybrid models and all of that stuff.
So potentially the, the transportation number won't become smaller, but it could potentially become greater or?
So right now, we, we, we basically are paying for X number of riders and pay and ride to take the transportation. And we need those buses because we use a tiered system within our buses. So we have basically one floating bus. That basically is there for emergency and then fifteen, fifteen buses really that are carrying students throughout. You still have. Your middle school and Yale together. If in fact, you had a bus transportation issue, that would be the first tier that would need to be split. So you would have X number of buses. You wouldn't be able to share the buses because the buses couldn't be remained as packed as they quote are. Right now, we don't see that happening, but yes, that could be the one curve ball would be having to have. The elimination of the shared tiered Yale Middle School become two separate tiers and that would be pretty significant amount of money. And have we already asked parents to sign up for buses? Matt, we just talked about the, I believe the, the signup for transportation is going out when?
We're gonna target June first. We wanna get through the town meeting and then vote the fees after the town meeting. And then we will release signups, I believe June first is what we're targeting. And let parents know and, and get the fees paid at that point.
You'll, you'll also get a, a drop fed date from the school committee. That'll be part of the vote that I'll ask Matt, my, Matt to have, which is that. Here's the start date, but here's, here's the end date. You know, we can't continue to, you know, last couple of years, it's definitely gotten better, but as you remember, we had some years where it was tough. Thank you.
Okay.
Need a vote.
Unless, unless there's any other comments or questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the, the cuts is written. All those in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Yes. Okay, thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, vote to approve decoration of surplus supplies to mini buses. This is fairly routine, but it doesn't come up all the time. Matt, back to you.
Yes, so we have received our, our two new mini buses. We received them over the past six months to a year. Covid delayed to deliver some of those buses. And then we, we had some, just some, worked through some troubles with the buses, but now we're ready to declare surplus, those two buses. One is a two thousand and one Chevy, one's a two thousand and two GMC. Both are expected to be scrap value only, so less than a thousand dollars. And we will get rid, dispose of those on munici bid, which is a, a platform that the town uses to auction off old equipment. And we just need a vote to declare those two units as surplus supplies.
Any questions on this? Okay. Seeing no questions, I would entertain a motion to declare both of those mini buses surplus supplies. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes. Okay, next up, we have other business.
Thank you. The first item is the rain date for town meeting is the fifteenth. I can verify that tonight, although we do not expect that that's gonna happen. And we're already anticipating that the lights will have to go on at some point on Saturday. And second, your meeting, to go with that, your meeting starts at twelve thirty. It's just for anything that may come up. And second, we did receive a, a letter from the Norton Veterans Council through their chairman, Gary Cameron. Mr. Cameron and I have had a number of discussions just about the years. He's a very big supporter of, of our relationship that we have between the Norton Veterans Council and the Norton Public Schools. This year, they are celebrating and providing each of our schools. A chair, a chair back that will be provided for each of our schools. So we're requesting if, if school committee members are available for that celebration on ten AM on, on the town common. And on Memorial Day, they'll showcase the five P O W chairs that will be donated to each of the Norton School locations. We will be asking students to attend. We will have administration representing as well. And so I just wanna invite you all, if you'd like to attend. You know, it's formal and informal, if you will. It's formal because it's a celebration of those that have lost their lives. And that's part of the Memorial Day, memorializing those that have fought for our freedom. So we'll be there and we're looking to then have them put in, in all of our schools. And I just wanted to thank Mr. Cameron and all of the members of the Norton Veterans Council for considering this. Norton Public Schools, although because of COVID and everything else, remains one of the school system that continues to celebrate Memorial Day and Veterans Day with our students, as you all know. Many school systems don't do that anymore. We still do. We're not doing it now because of COVID. But this will be another way. So we're gonna attempt to try to get families and, and students to attend from each of the five schools representing the school. So that's my job to do over the next few weeks. So thank you to the chairman, Cameron and his entire group. And of course, our veterans agent, Stell Flood, who's also always part, takes in these wonderful ceremonies.
Just want to mention, I saw Mr. Cameron this past weekend, the hockey team did the spring cleanup over there to get ready for his grand reopening, which is gonna be on the fifteenth. And he did bring some of the kids in to see the, the chairs. He is, he's very proud to be able to donate them to our schools. He also bought the stanchions that will go on his schools to block off the chairs. So I, I will absolutely wouldn't miss this. I'll be there and hopefully you guys can, can be there. He's, he's excited to see everybody there. And he definitely is very proud. Yeah.
What do the stanchions look like? My reading is wrong. Is it, is it? Thing in front of the chair?
Yeah, so that people don't sit on.
Right. I think they had like the black, the black ribbon across. He showed me them. They're at the B F W now. So he does need help though. He's going to have people on his committee bring the chairs there, but then he's wondering if we can get them home and I figured between our trucks, we could.
Yeah, we have.
Get them to the school.
We have Wade and we'll have Wade be able to take care of all that. We've already worked out a.
Okay.
At minimum, I'm gonna go to one location because we have to really work with fire codes and all that stuff for the right location so that we don't. Put them somewhere that we have to move it. So we're looking at what those best locations will be at each of the schools.
Yeah. Great.
And just one last item is the article eleven on the town meeting. You have a handout. That's the handout that will be provided to the town meeting. This, this is being printed and produced by training. It's not using tax paid dollars in the immigration form. And it's not violating any of the state regulations. I just wanted to give you a copy of the copy I made just for us as a board.
And, and on that note, I just want to remind everybody that Saturday, the eighth at one o'clock, we have the town meeting. So there are quite a few things on the agenda. It is an important meeting, not that any of them are not, but this one is particularly so. So I would encourage everybody out there to please show up.
Okay, starting, people can show up at noon time to start to register and check in. Yeah, it's gonna be busy.
We expect a very large crowd. So, okay, any other business, any other comments?
I just want to give a shout out to our, our grounds crew and our athletic director. They were literally working on the middle school courts all day. As I pulled up to pick up my daughter, they were frantically cleaning up those courts before the boys first match today. So our athletic director was, was in the mix with the broom. Our grounds crew worked really hard. The courts are in pretty sad shape and they were, they were doing their best to try and make it playable. So shout out to them for all their hard work to. Get the tennis courts ready for our, for our athletes tonight. Thanks, Dan.
Okay, if there are no other comments, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.